Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, July 20, 2016, at 5:12 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Landrigan.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Shabazian.
Here.
And Chairperson Lee.
Here. Can we have a report regarding posting of agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, July 13, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and also on the city's website.
Can I ask Commissioners Bajin to... Please rise.
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance to this flag of the greatest nation on the face of the earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the sky.
Please be seated. Can we have the approval minutes? So.
Second.
Okay. We have motion and second. So it's been approved. We don't have any oral communications. No CNE. Zoning appeals, there is none. And we'll move on to Planning Commission items. Item number seven, all business. It's a 4,700 Dunsmore Avenue. The public hearing at the time was closed, and we were looking for findings, and then we do have a revised motion here. So I know there's a speaker card here for the 4,700 Dunsmore, but public hearing is closed, so I will not ask you to come up and speak. I will not open it. So can we have motion for the new revised motion, please?
I move the motion that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to wireless telecommunications facility case number PWTF-1523946 located at 4,700 Dunsmore Avenue, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, that the Planning Commission hereby denies said wireless telecommunications facility case number PWTF-1523946 in accord with the findings set forth below.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Aye.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Lee.
Abstained. Okay, moving on to the new business. We have 2,612 Honolulu Avenue, which is also known as the 2635 Sycamore Avenue. Case number PZC-1601571 and PDR-1601574. And we have a staff report, please.
Good evening, all. Good evening, everyone, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a proposal to construct a two- and three-story, 28-unit multifamily development on a 43,610 square foot lot, in conjunction with the zone change request to place a PPD overlay zone on the property at 2612 Honolulu Avenue. The project includes demolition of the existing vacant restaurant bar, was formerly the Mix, and surface parking lot, and will be constructed on four adjoining lots. The surrounding neighboring properties to the east feature a one-story auto body use, while the neighbors, the properties on the west, include a multi-tenant commercial building on the lot that fronts Honolulu, and a two- and three-story senior multifamily residential building on the adjacent through lot. Okay. It's okay. There are a total of four lots, and the two lots that have frontage along Honolulu Avenue, with the easterly lot being a through lot to south to Sycamore, are currently zoned C2, height District 1. And there are additionally two lots fronting Sycamore that are currently zoned R1 with a floor area ratio District 2. The slight slopes downward from west to east along Honolulu by almost three feet, and also from north to south from Honolulu Avenue to Sycamore, almost over 10 feet on the easterly side of the property line. The entire site is being proposed to be rezoned with a precise plan of design overlay. So what is a precise plan of design overlay? When specific findings can be made, a precise plan of design is a tool to allow flexibility in zoning regulations while maintaining compliance with the general plan, where development proposals take advantage of site characteristics, site location, and access points to achieve superior design or function in ways expressing the intent and providing protections of the existing zoning designation. And I will point out, now that we have a little exhibit behind you on the board, shows you, in red, are the two lots that are zoned C2. Those are the lots that front Honolulu. At the top of the screen, along the bottom of the screen is Sycamore to the south, and in the yellow are the two lots that are zoned R1. You can see the existing, in this aerial, the existing vacant restaurant bar with the surface parking lot that spreads over both of those zoning designations. Back to PPD. Like all proposed zone changes, requests to place a PPD overlay zone on a particular project site require approval of the City Council with a recommendation by the Planning Commission. Now, a PPD overlay zone does not in itself have conditions, but the development itself requires council approval of a specific set of plans for each site. Each development must obtain its normal design approval. In this instance, this case was heard by the Design Review Board on May 26, and no other plans can be built without a new set of plans receiving approval by City Council. So this sort of locks in this design on this overlay zone. This site is located in the North Glendale Community Plan, and this specific site is within the Verdugo City Residential Neighborhoods designation. The vision of this designation is a mix of single and multifamily homes, with the majority of multifamily homes located closer to public transportation and commercial activities. There will continue to be a great deal of variation throughout the neighborhood with respect to streetscape and public improvements, landscaping, and architectural design. Because of the variety throughout the area, new additions in building design should be tailored to the immediate context while adhering to the principles of the Comprehensive Design Guidelines. Additionally, the single and multifamily neighborhoods of this area are characterized with existing low-density residential and by some well-designed multifamily buildings and mature landscaping. But this area will allow for new multifamily development that respects the scale of the neighborhood and provides a transition in mass and scale to adjacent single-family dwellings. Building facade should be articulated to portray domestic scale and give identity to individual dwelling units. Parking should be located to reduce its visibility from streets and open space areas and keep outside of setbacks. Safe, active pedestrian scale, varied multifamily housing that clearly defines and activates the public street is encouraged. So I'll touch on a little bit of the project design, but I know that the project designer is here and will be happy to walk you through any specifics on it. But generally speaking, like I said, it's a 28-unit multifamily development. It's spread across the project site within four building envelopes and follows the unusual shape of this dual-front site. The project will be oriented towards both Honolulu Avenue and Sycamore Avenue with an eight-foot and 20-foot street front setback respectively. These street setbacks significantly exceed the setbacks of adjacent properties on both Honolulu and Sycamore avenues. Access to the property for vehicles will be in a garage from Sycamore Street, or Sycamore Avenue on the easterly side of the property closer to Rosemont Avenue. The primary pedestrian access to the interior courtyard will be from Sycamore, though there will be some pedestrian access points along Honolulu through a central entryway between the buildings and along the interior side property lines. Common open space and landscaped open space areas are provided throughout the property. The majority of the required common open space is located within a large courtyard that fronts along Sycamore Avenue. And each of the residential units will have private balconies or patios. They range from 62 to 200 square feet in size, and new landscaping will be drought-tolerant and appropriate to the design of the project. The project's mass and scale comply with the North Glendale Community Plan by minimizing the mass of the new buildings on Sycamore Avenue, which is a residential street, and having the larger mass of the building shifted to Honolulu Avenue, which is a commercial street. So how does this project deviate from the underlying zoning, the C2 and the R1 zone? A PPD overlay allows a project flexibility from these two zoning designations, and there are a number of ways that this project does vary from those codes. Largely, it has to do with the difficulty of constructing a multifamily project when the code requires residential developments that are located on commercial streets in a mixed-use setting while still applying the regulations of our multifamily standards, the R1250 standards. Additionally, the project features a change in topography and abuts two street frontages with different characteristics. But with the PPD overlay zone, this site can meet the challenge of these two different zoning designations, the R1 and the C2. And the dual zoning on this site has proven to be the significant impediment to a modern development, and most of the PPD and mixed-use rezonings in the city that have been undertaken in the last decade or so have been to reduce this constraint of applying the multifamily zoning standards in commercial zones with mixed-use rules and multifamily rules that are more functional. So the city's, just some of the standards, the city's R1250 standards currently apply to the portion of the site, Zone C2, and under this standard, up to 21 units would be allowed on the C2 portion of the site. With the two R1-zone lots, the site would allow for two additional units, so for a total of 23 units. The R1250 zone permits a floor area ratio of 1.2, with buildings no more than three stories or a maximum of 41 feet. Buildings are required to have a minimum 20-foot setback from the street front, and the proposed project would develop four two-story buildings containing a total floor area of roughly 38,000 square feet. There'd be a total of 28 multifamily units on this site with a maximum building height of 39 feet. The proposed project would feature an eight-foot setback along Honolulu and 23 feet along Sycamore, with the parking garage setback at 20 feet. And these setbacks would be substantial in comparison to the immediate adjacent buildings. The project would have code-required parking of 67 parking spaces, including seven guest parking spaces. But really, the flexibility of the zoning standards spread out are the residential density, 23 units versus 28, the floor area ratio, mainly because a lot of the square footage is in the R1 zone, the height, because this would exceed the height limit of the R1 zone, lot coverage, again, because it's blurring the multifamily project into some of the R1 portion, setbacks, the front interior, the setback averaging, and then landscaping, because there is a significant additional landscape open space requirement when multifamily development on lots greater than 90 feet have to provide an additional landscape open space at the front within the front setback. With that being said, overall, the site plan of the project is appropriate for the subject site with the recommendations that are attached to the project. The project addresses Honolulu and Sycamore avenues respectively, each with a more appropriate style of reinforcing the more mixed-use commercial feel of Honolulu and the lower-scale feel of residential feel of Sycamore Avenue. The project does feature ample landscape outdoor space throughout the development, more common open space is provided than is required by code, and there's also a 475-square-foot recreation room fronting Sycamore Avenue on the same level as the garage. Multiple retaining walls on the site, made of low garden walls, are proposed to have the buildings follow the existing grade change on the site, and per the North Glendale Community Plan, this project incorporates those walls to accommodate that difference. The two- and three-story project is broken down into a group of four largely separate structures that minimize the impact of a 28-unit development across a dual-frontage lot and results in a project that is compatible with the adjacent developments. The project complies with the North Glendale Community Plan by minimizing the mass of the new buildings along Sycamore Avenue, which is, again, a residential street, and having the larger mass of the building shifted to Honolulu, a commercial street. Overall, the project will be composed of quality material, is consistent with the design and detailing, as reviewed by the Design Review Board and as conditioned. The project is expressive of good taste, good design, and contributes to the image of Glendale as a place of beauty, creativity, and individuality because of the high-quality site planning, mass, and scale and design of detailing. And the proposed building will improve the appearance and value of the local environment by demolishing the vacant restaurant and bar and surface parking lot and bringing a high-quality development to the area.
So there is no value to having a bar anymore?
Not a vacant bar.
Not a vacant.
The project also satisfies the North Glendale Community Plan vision of Verdugo City by tailoring a design to respect the scale of the commercial and residential character of the neighborhood while providing a transition in mass and scale over the project site as it slopes towards the single-family neighborhood. The deviations from the zoning code include, again, residential density, floor area ratio, lot coverage, setbacks, and landscaping. Many of these are justified by the topography and dual zoning of the designation of the project site, and the large size of the site easily accommodates a larger multifamily development. Again, the intent of the PPD is to encourage developments of superior design, appearance, and function by allowing reasonable variations from zoning standards and use restrictions for developments to take advantage of the site. The project complies with the intent of the PPD and the North Glendale Community Plan by making best use of the site configurations and topography, by minimizing the mass along Sycamore and focusing the mass of the building along Honolulu Street. In addition, this project was, has a negative declaration associated with it and is attached in your packet. The comment period for the notice of intent began on June 21, and I believe closes today. To date, no comments have been received regarding the negative declaration at the time of writing this report and even through 5 o'clock. So that concludes sort of the outline of the project, the context, and some of the findings needed for this. I'm available for any questions, and I know the applicant is here too.
Thank you, Ms. Asp.
Specifics.
Hope we have a few hands here, so...
I will yield to Stephanie, and then I'll follow.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Ms. Asp, I'm curious if you saw the comments that we got. If somebody could explain Mr. Wolfgang Kraus's letter to us.
I'm going to defer to... Commissioner, members of the Planning Commission, Yvette Manukian, Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office. I had a chance to look over the charter provision, and it seems that the charter provision, first of all, talks about a petition to the City Council and talks about a petition made directly by 50% or more of the owners of a lot. And this is not the case here. This is a PPD project, although it is a zone change. It is, you're simply recommending to the City Council that they approve the zone. So there's that difference there. The other point I want to make is that this is a very old charter provision, and currently state law, as you know, requires CEQA review, and there's just no way that any municipality could process the zone change of this magnitude, particularly with a PPD where there's an individual project that requires CEQA review, and all the deadlines established by state law would preclude us from...
The 90 days.
The 90 days, exactly. So anytime a charter provision violates state law, we cannot enforce it. So that's sort of the nutshell answer to that question.
Thank you.
For back to you, sir.
Commissioner Asp. So, really, very obvious question. How come we're not moving or changing that part of the charter?
You know, that is a question I'll have to take back to my office, and we'll have to look at that. But I cannot answer that right now.
Very good. So I do have some questions for you, for staff, that is. Now, all six findings have to be made, correct?
Correct.
I mean, from good taste, superior quality, compatibility, conformity, Design Review Standards, and the substantial compliance. How is it, or who is it, that decides that this project has got superior quality? And what's the standard for superior quality?
I think that the decision is the City Council would make that determination, and it is subjective, but I think the description laid out lends itself to making a call if this is a superior-quality project.
So then, in other words, it has gone through a review, albeit, I don't know if I can call it cursory or in-depth, that the staff feels from what you're seeing that this is a superior quality?
And then bringing that forward to have reviewed by, for a recommendation by the Design Review Board, and then on to the Planning Commission to continue that analysis and review with, again, a recommendation on to City Council.
So the superior-quality part of it has not been established as of yet, not fully at least, or has it?
It's been proposed.
Well, it's being recommended to us.
Right.
The staff is recommending that, they think it's superior, and for us to ratify that recommendation and move it along to the City Council.
So, thank you for the clarification. And so, the other question that I have is, because there is a negative declaration, there was no need to evaluate an alternative development. Are we on the same page on this?
Correct. Alternatives are generally reserved for environmental impact reports when the project has significant impacts that are...
So at the council level, a PPD or a zone change in general needs how many votes? Eric, Mr. Kraus?
Yeah, they need four votes.
So it's a supermajority?
Correct, yeah.
So this would require a supermajority?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question, and it is concerning the negative declaration here, and it has to do with the traffic study. Presently, there is no ingress or egress to these properties from Sycamore. It's all from Honolulu. Now, there is ingress and egress of every 28 new condos here proposed, and yet it's considered less than significant. In fact, some say no impact as a result in change of traffic patterns. That if there's two cars, or three cars, per apartment or condo-whatever unit, let's just say, that are now coming on to Sycamore, how can that be no impact? And certainly, the significance on a very arterial street can have a significant impact on that neighborhood. So I'd like the justification for those findings.
Yes, Ms. Landrigan. I know that the traffic consultant is in the audience...
Did he prepare this?
He prepared the traffic study that was evaluated for the negative declaration. But in kind of a simple answer to that question is that the number of trips generated from the 28-unit project weren't significant enough to raise it to a level of potential That's the short answer.
Any more questions? If we don't have any more questions from the Commissioners, we'll move on to the public hearing phase. We do have an applicant and also architect, Mr. Art Simoni. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Art Simoni. I'm with Metro Investments. I'm the architect and also the developer for the project. I'd like to start off by really introducing the property and the site, and I think that's really important for the board members to look at this holistically as far as the context is concerned. As staff has indicated, about 21,800 square feet of the lot is zoned C2, and the rest, approximately 21,800 square feet, are zoned R1. And the uniqueness of it is that the C2 portion, as indicated on the screen over there, goes lot to lot. It goes from block to block. It goes from Honolulu all the way over to Sycamore. And the complexity of the project and the site is that there's a 14-foot grade difference between Honolulu and Sycamore, and so that's a very challenging factor to work around. And because of that grade difference, there's also an existing retaining wall, as depicted in that photo on the screen, that runs along the entire southern front of Sycamore. And so the project, for many years, has turned its back on to Sycamore and has basically been a nuisance for the area because of field parking, and it's been a field parking for a bar for many, many years. On Sycamore, directly west of us, is a three-story multifamily building, and as you can see, it has very little setback, whether it's a five-foot or a four-foot setback, but whatever it is, it's a three-story component right there next to us on the west side. And then, on the east side on Sycamore, is the auto body use, and as you can tell, it has a very fortified, kind of hard, commercial, industrial edge to it. That coupled with the power lines that run along Sycamore, coupled with the retaining wall that's along Sycamore, I would categorize this as a very, very unique R1 block. It's kind of been this remnant parcel that's had these uses, you know, developed next to it over the years. On Honolulu, directly west of us, is the multifamily building, as I indicated, on the other side. However, on this side, it's a two-story. And as you can tell, it's just this long facade that's not undulated, it's not broken up, it's just this really poor multifamily project to our west. And of course, portion of our property along Honolulu then fronts another commercial property to the west as well, and of course, there's Jean's Auto Body on the east side on Honolulu. And as such, overall, this was one of the most challenging properties I've ever worked with as an architect or as a developer, and it was a very difficult project for us to go through. As for the existing entitlements for the property that currently run with it, the existing building, portion of the existing building sits on the C2 portion, which is legal, nonconforming, it's legal, and then there's a portion of the building that sits on the R1-zone property, which is nonconforming and nonlegal, and it needs to be demolished. However, the field parking sits both on the C2 zones and on the R1 zones, and a land-use variance was granted in the 1960s that run with the property that allowed for that field parking. And so, over time, the restaurant turned into a biker bar, and the biker bar turned into a serious nuisance. And between August 2008, way before we had bought the property, to March of 2010, there were 102 police calls to the Police Department about noise, ruckus, problems, and ultimately the bar was shut down. Since we've owned the property, we've had a lot of proposals from people to acquire the property from us, to turn it into SB 1818 housing, to other uses such as banquet halls or restaurants or bars, but we didn't think that was the best use for the property. We frankly think a multifamily use is the best and less impactful use for the property, and that's why we're here tonight, to share with this project and this vision with... And that's why we're here tonight, to share with this project and this vision with the board. With all our projects, we really start off looking into the specific plan or the community plan of a given neighborhood. And this property is no different. It's part of the North Glendale Community Plan. And the site is located between the Verdugo City and the Montrose Village portions of the community plan, the North Glendale Community Plan. And so, the plan really calls for shifting of the mass, building mass, away from residential streets, onto commercial streets. And that's something very important that we'll circle around in a little bit. It also talks about transitions and the building locations, as far as how adjacent buildings are placed, and to place buildings in such ways where the setbacks conform to the adjacent properties, which we have done as well. It talks about that if there's a sloping property, to break up the slope with multiple garden walls, which we have done. It also calls... The plan also calls to eliminate really hazardous situations with vehicles entering the site where they should not cross double yellow lines. They should be mindful of the surrounding driveway locations. And in our case, the multifamily building is access from Sycamore. The industrial building to our east is also access from Sycamore. There is a school on the northeast corner of that intersection on Honolulu. And when we met with Bureau of Engineering, they did not want the driveway on Honolulu. They preferred it on Sycamore, and so did the community, which I'll get to. So as far as the project design is concerned, it's really been designed exactly with the community plan in mind, and that's what we have done. We've really studied all the development options available for the site. A residential project is the least impactful of them all. A low-density, two-story residential project will nestle into the surrounding neighborhood and really fit into the residential fabric of the neighborhood. And also, the surface parking lot will be relocated to a subterranean parking garage that would not be visible from the street. And the project does propose a lot more open space than code because of the abundance of open space, which I'll get to. It has a very open feel to it, and the project is proposing 28 units on one acre of land that is very low density. If we apply the R1250 standards to the, let's say, entire site, to the entire 43,610-square-foot property, we would end up with 43 units. However, I know, by the way, that those 43 units could be three stories in height on Honolulu, which would translate into three plus the subterranean garage to possibly four on Sycamore. However, with the PPD, we're actually proposing 28 units and a two-story. So we're proposing 2/3 the density and 2/3 the height. And so this isn't one of those PPD projects where it's actually applying for a higher density and higher allowable height. It's just the opposite. And that is why we've really had a lot of great community support, and that's why some of the community members who are here tonight. And oh, by the way, that is why there were numerous community members that came to the Design Review Board hearing that occurred about two months ago, where the project design was completely vetted, and it was really referred to as a very superior design. And so, as for the specific entitlements that we're proposing this evening, we propose to utilize the PPD. The PPD was really conceived for these type of unique situations. A variance or a zone change, as far as the entitlements are concerned, would really run with the land. For example, if the property is sold, or many years later, someone were to redevelop the property, that zone change would always be there. Whereas in the PPD is the opposite. The PPD is very project-specific. And so the project is approved as a PPD, the project would be built as a PPD, and the project would have to absolutely conform to what you are seeing behind you. And if it deviates, then we would have to come back for approvals again. As such, the PPD is extremely strict, and it does not allow for any deviations. So, moving on to really our process and how we conduct every project, is we, very early on, seek a lot of guidance from the community, and this project was no different. Overall, we had five different community meetings. The first one was back in May 2015. We met with some of the NVSNA board members and also some folks that live on Sycamore. So we got some design feedback and guidance at that meeting. And then, again, June of 2015, we had our second meeting. And during that meeting, we voluntarily send out 500-foot notices to everybody within 500 feet of our property, and we invited them to that meeting. And they came out and we listened, and a lot of ideas were thrown out, and a lot of good thoughts were shared, and we took all those and we furthered our design. In July 2015, we met with the NVSNA board, and this was more of a specific meeting where we brought really two very different projects front of the NVSNA board.
Instead of using the acronym, would you please state exactly what NVSNA stands for?
It's the Montrose, Verdugo City... Montrose, Verdugo... No.
This is not a quiz question.
Verdugo City. The City's not in there. Sparheids Neighborhood Association.
Montrose, Verdugo...
City, Sparheids Neighborhood Association.
Association.
Thank you.
It's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Because it encompasses a lot of different communities. And I'm glad you brought that up, because it's an important acronym to identify. And so, we met with that board for the third meeting, and we presented two very different projects to them. We presented a three-story condominium project on the C2 portion, and then, single-family homes on Sycamore, and that was project number one. Or we basically proposed a two-story, 28-unit project on the entire site. And the board basically agreed that a two-story project throughout the site was a better use for the property. And they realized that that was going to entail the PPD or the use of the PPD. And what you must realize is that, as we're looking at the screen, and when we have the multifamily building to our west, and then we have that commercial property to our north, and there's a 10-foot difference between the commercial property directly to our west and the R1 portion of the site. And so, when we look at the multifamily property to our west, and this is a shot that's taken at night, you already saw the shot during the day, these single-family homes would be located next to a three-story multifamily building. And oh, by the way, their backyards would have a 10-foot retaining wall, and to the north of that will be a commercial property with its parking lot. And so, when you design a project in the true spirit of the zoning underneath it, you end up with really bad architecture, bad planning, and you end up with homes that have no light or air. And so what have we really accomplished? We've stuck to the code, we've stuck to the inherent zone underneath the property, but we've ended up creating really substandard homes. And so, that's where the win-win scenario really evolved, was in that third meeting, where all of a sudden it made sense, where if we just do a two-story project, and we end up with a two-story, let's say, along Sycamore, well, our multifamily along Sycamore is going to be two-story, and the single-family homes would have been two-story. What's really the difference? Nothing. And so, it's really more of a spot zoning to keep the R1 as it is the other way around. But it's very important, and it was very important to the community, that we utilized the PPD as opposed to a zone change for several reasons. One is, the zone change would have set a very bad precedent, where there's a lot of these lots that have R1 in the back and commercial in the front, and it would have been a bad precedent. Number two is, if we would have turned around and sold the property, or if somebody would have picked up the property years down the road, they could have maybe done an SB 1818 project over the whole lot, let's say, and really have pushed the density. And so the PPD was exactly the... It possessed the restrictions that the community was looking for, and that's how we ended up there. And so, moving on to our fourth meeting with the group, September of 2015, we really presented the project at the NVSNA's board meeting. And at that point, we had some more specifics. And then finally, on the fifth meeting, we had renderings, elevations, and so forth. And that fifth meeting took place May of 2016, just a month before the DRB. And that's when we were able to really get everyone behind the project and move forward to Design Review Board with everyone's blessing. So the concepts that were discussed and agreed upon by the NVSNA board and the community was that they did not prefer a three-story long Honolulu, that the overall, they preferred the driveway on Sycamore, although it might not be the most ideal for some of the residents on Sycamore, but overall, it's the best for the community. The traffic consultant will go over the traffic counts that we did on Sycamore. It's very low. And when you look at the double-yellow lines that would have to be crossed on Honolulu to hang a left into the parking structure, and the double-yellow lines that would be crossed as you're exiting the parking structure on Honolulu, coupled with the fact that the city's working on a bike lane on Honolulu, coupled with the fact that you got a school at the northeast corner of Honolulu, it just does not make any sense. And that's why the city engineer did not want the driveway on Honolulu. And the board agreed with it. The board preferred a centralized green space, which we have provided, and so it provides relief on Sycamore. As when you look at the project from Sycamore, there's an abundance of open space, there's an opening, and again, all the retaining walls are broken up into multiple garden walls. The board preferred to break up the roof along the entire project and not to have a massive roof, and so that's what we've done. And the board wanted large setbacks along Sycamore, and that's what we've done. It's the west side of the buildings on Sycamore, sit back about 23 or 24 feet, and the middle courtyard is very big. And so, in order to align with adjacent buildings on Honolulu Avenue, we pushed the mass up away from the R1 buildings and into Honolulu. So, as you can see, a lot of the project encompasses all these design features that are part of the North Glendale Community Plan, and also, that was everything that was discussed. And so, this project is going to be a great precedent for the community, because it's going to really show that through dialogue and meetings, that these difficult sites could come to fruition. And instead of creating a divide between the development world and also the community, this just the opposite. So, my timer hasn't gone off, but I know I've spoken for a while, so I'm just going to stop it at that and then address any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. McDaniel, traffic consultant, to come up and answer the questions that we had from Commissioner Landerga.
For sure. Members of the commission, to address your question on respect to the traffic generation for the project. The project, as it is proposed, is going to generate 187, to be exact, trips based on a multifamily nature of it, which is typical for this type of a project. It will generate 14 a.m. and 17 p.m. peak hour. We look at the peak hour to see if it'll impact adjacent intersections. In this case, could be the Sycamore and Rosemont, or the intersection Honolulu and Rosemont. We did count the traffic on Sycamore. It has 811 average daily traffic volume. And if you add the project traffic to that in the future, it will go up to 997, to be exact, plus or minus a couple of trips. The general plan, circulation element, that has designations for the street system in the city, classifies Sycamore as a local street. The environmental capacity of Sycamore is 2,500 cars a day. And so whenever there is a trip generation on a local street or arterial minor or local, we'll look at the trip generation to see if it does exceed the environmental capacity of that street. In this case, if you add, as I said, 997, is almost 40% of the capacity, environmental capacity, of Sycamore. Again, ideally, no one wants to have a street, local street, to carry all the way up to 2,500 cars a day, but there are many local streets in Glendale that do carry that volume. And let's say, for the sake of discussion, even if this was at 2,500, again, there's another threshold that you cannot exceed it by 10% of the total volume of the street. So if there was even 2,500, it would be 250. You cannot exceed it by 250 cars a day. So this still will be even below that 250 number. So that's how we analyze it, in terms of whether or not this will create a significant impact. As I stated, also during the peak hour, we looked at the intersection of Sycamore and Rosemont, to see because the stops are in control if there will be any increase in the delay. And we're talking about maybe one car every three minutes, based on the trip generation during the a.m. and the p.m. So we do not see that that would become a problem, ideally, for the street, if the project has access on Sycamore. As Mr. Simoniun mentioned, we did talk with the city traffic engineer. Given the close proximity of the driveway on Honolulu, and it will make it very difficult to make a left turn in or out. Now, in comparison to the existing uses, when you have an apartment, obviously, this is generating somewhere about 187. The close proximity of the driveway on Honolulu to Rosemont would have made it more difficult. So in fact, you will force everybody to make a right turn out of their driveway, and it will make it a circuitous, because if you made a right turn and you want to go back up, you would either have to go make, try to a U-turn at the intersection of Rosemont and Honolulu, or you would make a right turn to go down to Sycamore, again, go back onto Sycamore to go to the next street, which would be Agner. So that was the other reasons that I think the driveway on Sycamore makes more sense from that standpoint. Plus, this driveway is located farthest to the east of Sycamore, so that most of the traffic that's going to go to and from the apartment will be using Rosemont instead of going through the neighborhood in that direction toward Agner, to have access to Honolulu. So those are the points that I wanted to make in response to whether there is a concern. We always look at the local traffic to see how it's impacted if a project is having access on a local street.
Thank you. So you said there, right now, is 811 cars. Is that per day?
Per day, 24 hours.
And you are saying that you will only generate 187?
For the trip generation rate, which is the industry standard for a condo or an apartment, we use the apartment rate because it's higher than a condo. So, you know, if this project was a condo, it would have generated 167, less trip. But we look at the apartment rate to make it be more conservative.
Well, there are 30 homes on Sycamore from...
Rosemont.
Rosemont, and they generate 811, but 28 apartments are only going to generate 187. Somehow, that math seems a little odd to me.
Be happy to show you the trip generation rates for all, because it depends on the type of residential, how many cars they own. But a residential street typically could be between seven and 10 trips a day sometimes. Seven or 10 trips a day. That's what the typical residential generates.
But condo apartment doesn't?
Yeah, there is also true traffic on that street, so you have to take it... But 30 homes, 10 trips a day, okay, 300 trips. And then you have Sycamore, which is an east-west peril street to Honolulu. So it does generate true traffic that are also accessing Rosemont. These are the residents who are there, or beyond Agner, that are also going through that residential street. So very, very... The 10 trips per residential street is a very good number. You can check it on every traffic study or environmental study that is prepared. That is a very good number, and it's been documented many, many times.
Thank you.
Sure.
I was curious to know, is the current level of service... What is the current level of service on that street?
Level of service on the street, as I said, you look at it from a street capacity standpoint. The environmental capacity of a local street is 2,500 cars a day, very typical in many residential street in Glendale or any other street. So you can assume that that would be 40% of the capacity of that street currently. If you add the project traffic to... if you add the project traffic to the existing traffic. But when we look at level of service, we look at the intersection level of service, which is, in this case, was Honolulu and Rosemont, and it operates at level of service B. When you add the project traffic to it, it's very insignificant in terms of altering it to change. Even if it was, it has to be a level of service D before you can say that it gets impacted significantly if it goes more than .02 decimal points over the level of service.
Okay, so it stays at B?
It stays at B with the proposed project as it is today. And we also looked at some of the related projects in the area. There are not really any new projects in the area, so it wasn't like, at the time of construction, the completion of this project, there will be no other changes in the area that would have pushed the level of service higher.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yeah, Mr. McDaniel, the trips in the Meridian report, the 811 trips per day ADT on Sycamore, when, this was calculated, this is recent numbers, right, that you have?
Yes, we just did that, I don't, I may have the date of the, it was done...
It was done for this study?
Yes, it was specifically done right before the project hearing started, we did the traffic count at that time. It would have been probably in February of 2016.
Okay. So for all intensive purposes, let's, let's see if my math is correct here. If what Commissioner Landrigan is stating, 30 homes, and if I were to divide 811 into 30, that gives me 26 trips, right? Now, the difference is what you, what assumably you're thinking about being the, the through traffic, the through, the through traffic, right?
Yes, plus you also keep in mind, there's multifamily residential on that street as well.
Okay, so no, I understand that, but if I were to take 800 divided by 30, that'll give me 26. And what you were saying is 10 per property is more or less the norm, that, you know, that's the standard, the standard that you apply. So then it would be safe to say that the rest are through traffic?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Michael Morgan. I'm speaking as an individual, though I am on the board of the Montrose Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association, the MVSNA, within whose boundaries this development will be constructed. I am here for the planning, I'm here for the planning commission to grant approval of this project, which is a great transition from Verdugo City to Montrose itself. The developer, as you have heard, the developer, Mr. Simonian, has involved the community in every stage of this project, has conducted at least five meetings with the residents, soliciting their input and modifying this project along the way, from a three-story to a two-story project, so that you can see the mountains, which is very important, up in my area of town. When do you ever hear of a developer scaling down a project? He even had a public park, which has now been modified because of the community input. I wish all developers in Glendale would be as open as Mr. Simonian from the very beginning, so there would not be as many us versus them projects as there is now in Glendale. In conclusion, please approve this project and allow the zoning change to place a PPD overlay zone on this property. Thank you. I'd like to say one other thing. I live off of Broadview, and it, when you go up Rosemont, the, Sycamore is a street I use all the time. So I'm probably using that street five and six times a day, so if they're counting, it's me. It's not very well-traveled. I do it in the morning, I do it at night, I do it at midnight. It's a very quiet street, and that's the reason I love going across it. It's not like Honolulu where there's a lot of traffic itself, so. I know they've got all the numbers, and I've seen all the numbers. If I thought this was going to make it worse for me transitioning on Sycamore, I would probably not be for this project, but I know it's not going to be. This is a great project. This is going to make, like I said, from Verdugo City to Montrose, this is that transition. And if you've been up to Verdugo City, you know there's a lot of property up there right at the moment that will eventually change hands and be developed, and we want this to be the thing that all the developers look at and say, yeah, this is what we want. This is the model of what we want up in this area. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Next, we have Grant Michaels.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Grant Michaels. I am the president of the Montrose Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association. It is a mouthful, I didn't name it. As far as changing it, we're a little too far into it for that. What I would like to start with is commending Metro Investments and the neighbors and the community for coming out for the outreach that we have had. Metro Investments voluntarily reached out to us to first discuss what could be done on the project. A total of five meetings were held, many of them, three of those were amongst the board to try and organize. We did hold two community meetings that invited the community at large to come and hear about this project, one of which was our annual meeting, which was held at 12 Oaks. Metro Investments had us play, or allowed us to place a 14-foot banner across the front of the mixed property to try and help us get the word out about this meeting. In a sense, this was an unprecedented project for us of having input from the developer or with the developer at the start of the project. Generally, we come to hearing bodies like this once the staff report has been presented, and we are arguing for compromise. With the two years that we have spent working with Metro Investments and listening to them and having our input and the community's input heard, we're in the difficult position of knowing that, and we acknowledge that there are those in the immediate community that have impacts and significant objections to this project. But we are coming with the conclusion that this is an acceptable compromise. When we look at what could have been built, if we look solely at keeping the commercial zone along Honolulu intact, along that strip, with three stories with the density that could be put there, if the property were essentially split, and the commercial portion on Honolulu developed separately from the Sycamore side, the impacts of that would be greater than looking at this project holistically. Having us accept the PPD and understand that, we're doing so knowing that we are not going beyond and exceeding limits, but we are reducing the limits across the entire site. With mitigated negative declaration, we are comparing that to what it would be as a bar, as a commercial use. We are looking at the traffic where the driveway is now, knowing at evening times and the peak time for the bar, the traffic of crossing the double-yellow line, we are looking at this project now and saying, it is, this PPD and this design is a lesser impact than what it was. Well, I would and have encouraged the neighbors to come out, to engage in this process and be involved. We are coming to the conclusion that this is an appropriate compromise, and we do support the project, the PPD, and the MND. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dipat Churn, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name.
My name is Deepak Achutani. I'm in 2630 Sycamore Avenue, just across the property. Mr. Chairman and Commission Member, good evening. I bought my house on this street in Glendale in 1991. I'm in 25 years. I purchased the house, looking to the views from my house, which is going to be impacted by this construction. Parking is another thing. I've seen studies done, maybe it was done on a very quiet day. I travel every day from that street, go to my work, my family travels, and neighbors travel. I don't understand that how 811 came in a picture. Again, the gentleman said it was done recently, to your question. This was a number was put in very first meeting back in February of, or May of 15, so it was done before then. I'm not sure how recent numbers are right now. Now, about the five meetings, we are the one who's impacted on the street because that's where construction, all the entry to the project is going to be. We are informed on one meeting, and I know there was quite opposition from few members from there. Unluckily, they cannot be here in all the meeting because of the work schedule and everything, but I know that it's not widely acceptable by the neighbors. About the project being a height, although it has been put as two-story and three-story, and as it is mentioned, it looked like two-story because up-trend parking, but when I look at the plan, I do see difference between two-story and three-story, so there's definitely height difference, how it can be viewed as a two-story. I don't understand that. It's going to block my view basically right away, because I live just across from that. It's going to also have an impact on privacy, because my house is a single-story house. When people are living on that house in two-story, I won't be able to open my window also now anymore, or keep the blind open, because people are going to have view on my house, what is going on. Again, I was reading to this, and I wanted to know about, on page two, there's a mention about, in paragraph in PPD, see attachment seven for council and commissioner to consider. I did not find attachment seven in the package, maybe it's missing in there, or I don't know where it is to find it. I was reading on page two, paragraph third, under PPD first paragraph, the last line in the first paragraph. Again, being open from the Sycamore side, it's going to add more nuisance to us who are living across, more noise is going to be there. Yeah, when there was a mix, there was some nuisance, but it was mostly during the evening or, and it was going through only like two to three days a week when the mix was open. People are coming from the Honolulu side, not from Sycamore. Right now, even with this, if I have to find a parking spot in front of my house, I have hard time to find in front of my house. With this being another 28 units on the street, everybody's entering from the Sycamore, it's going to be more hassle for finding parking. Parking is only, sub-trend parking is only on one building, so all other resident has to park there and walk from there. So what are chances the other people, if they find parkings on the street, close to their home, they'll park there and walk there, not going to go in the parking structure. So it's going to add more problem for parking on the street itself.
Can you wrap up, please? Your time is up, so can you wrap it up?
And I see approval by the people who are not living on the street. Yes, they are looking to the area, but they are not going to face the day-in, day-out problem that what we are going to face who are living on the street. So I basically oppose the project right now.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Mr. Bill Weisman.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman. I'm a member of the Steering Committee of the Crescent Valley Community Association, which is a multi-jurisdictional organization in the Crescent Valley, not only including the city of Glendale, but also on Incorporated Lock Crescenta, and our neighbors to the west, and Tohanga, and to the east, and La Cuenada. I wanted, I've already submitted a letter on behalf of our organization that I believe you already have, so I'll try not to duplicate what I said in the letter. We are basically here in support of the project and in support of your approval to send this on to the city council for a final decision. I think in any situation in Glendale where a precise plan of design is appropriate, this is probably one of the most appropriate ones, and I think it's due to the, the fact that there is this dual-zone issue with the property, and the unusual shape of the, of the property, and the fact that it faces one commercial street and one residential street. And to try and juggle all of the issues created by, by those things, we came to be in agreement that a PPD was the most appropriate way to, to approach a development of the property. As has been mentioned before, there was a very problematic history when the site was a bar. There were a number of police calls and a number of other issues in the neighborhood. And since the bar closed down, the property has sat vacant for many years. It's kind of an eyesore. I think it's somewhat of a foregone conclusion that it was going to be developed, and the question then became what would be the most appropriate development. And we are appreciative to the applicant and the developer for taking the time to sit down with the neighbors. As was mentioned, there were certainly other proposals, like the three-story frontage on Honolulu and single-family homes along Sycamore. And it was good to have an opportunity to have some back and forth and to, you know, express concerns, and we appreciate, you know, the willingness to be flexible on the part of the applicant. And so I'm here tonight asking you to approve the, and send on to the city council for, for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. You have five minutes for your boarder, for, I guess, Mr. Chan's comments.
Chairman Lee and board members, Art Simonian with Metro Investments. I already took a lot of your time, and I don't think I need to add a lot more detail to it. I would like to point out that not all residents on Sycamore are against the project. For example, I believe you have a support letter from Aria Isaac. Was that given over to the Commissioners? She lives directly across the street, I think two doors down from the individual that just spoke on Sycamore. She looks over directly to the parking structure entrance, and she is for the project, and she realizes that the current situation with the commercial use and the fact that we could develop the property with a commercial use, where the parking and the service for that commercial use will be from the rear of the building, will very much impact her house and her property values. And so she has enough of an open mind to consider all the compromises that have been made, and she knows that this project will actually increase her property values and will be a lot less impactful. Everything has been done, I could say this wholeheartedly, as an architect and a developer, there's nothing more we could do. We've tried everything to lessen the impact on, on the residents on Sycamore, from the two-story component on the west side, where it's more of a craftsman style, to pushing the majority of the mass towards Honolulu, to the open space. And the parking has 67 parking spots and seven guest parking spots. That's code, and that's what we're providing. Nothing more, nothing less. And so I urge you to support the project. I, of course, am available to answer any specific questions that you may have.
How many parking, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, how many parking spots are, is the project going to have?
67.
67, okay. So the guest parking would also be provided?
Of course, of course. There's seven of, seven of the 67 are guest parking.
For a moment, I thought you said it's 57, we're going to give them 57 now.
No, 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 it's 67.
Thank you.
Any questions, speaker, or any other speakers, comments, you put on, send it to the staff. I'm going to close the public hearing there.
Thank you.
We're going to deliberation. Comments?
I can get started. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I think this is a very smart design for that area. From what I see, what I hear, the efforts that you've made, currently, from what I saw in the pictures and looked at the map, that area and that parking lot looks like an eyesore. And you having to work with the community and coming up with something that majority seem to agree with is the right way to go. I don't know if any of my other colleagues have any other comments that I want to make, but that's what my stance is on that project. And I think that would bring a sense of, to the area, make it a little more comfortable maybe to walk. maybe to walk with all the open space, rather than the deserted parking lot that's currently there.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissions, Astorion.
Sure. Just a, not that it's that important, but I think I'll put that out, I don't believe that City of Glendale has a view ordinance.
Correct.
So, Mr. Kasthani, that's one of the issues. But having said that, what impresses me about what has happened here, it's exactly what unfortunately you missed part of it, which was the outreach that these folks have done. See, when you engage the community, the results are usually much better than non-engagement, because once you do that, you have disarmed speculation, and you have armed transparency, and you have gotten their views. And so, what that does, that it helps you to build a bridge, that the bolts and the nuts of it are dipped into what is called good faith. I didn't mean to get poetic, but that's where it is. Now, that is the kind of bridge that is much easier to cross, and as evidenced by the gentleman sitting here, not everybody would be able to cross that bridge, but I can assure you that the majority will be able to do it. So, if there is a playbook, where a builder-developer is this, it's exactly what has happened today, and in fact, if there is a way that our city can learn from the process, and in fact, use that as a recommendation to whoever is doing business in City of Glendale, to propose the results that can be created from engaging the community, only good things will come out of it. So, I think by having said that, you know where my sentiments lie with this project.
Thank you, Commissioners. Ms. Minikun.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Landrigan.
Well, I would like to commend Mr. Simonian first for engaging the community. I do think it is a great example. Hopefully, some previous projects that appeared before you all will follow in suit. And I also think that the compromises you've made were in good taste and also in good faith, and I understand that they were economically, sometimes not to your advantage, but to the community. I think that seeing that kind of action on your part and a civic-mindedness is to be commended. Thank you. And I am also willing to propose it, unless you, Mr. Chair, would like to say something?
I would like to make a last comment. I'd like to resonate, you know, rest of the Commissioners' sentiment here. Initially, I didn't know what PPD overlay was, and, and, you know, this is a good tool, you know, for this type of application, and it was, it was a, it was a good learning experience for me. And I think Commissioners Astorion asked, what is a superior design? I think it's a process, and I think, Mr. Simonian, what you did going through with the neighbors is a, is a superior project, superior process and design, so I commend you for that. So, I'm ready to entertain motion here.
Right. I, Commissioner Chabazian, upon basically consideration of the proposed ordinance relating to the placement of the precise plan of design overlay zone, zoning code amendment, zoning map amendment, case number PZC 160157 on the property at 2612 Honolulu Avenue, 2635 Sycamore Avenue, APN numbers 5611-012-003, 5611-012-014, and 5611-012-018, and consideration of the development proposed within the project site, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City Council adopts a negative declaration, approve the proposed PPD overlay zone, and approve the proposed development as recommended by the Design Review Board.
Support.
Second.
Here we are, motion is support. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorion.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Chabazian.
Yes.
And Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a vote of 5 to 0. Motion passes. Okay, next, we have Community Development Department Updates.
Charlie, Members of the Commission, we do have updates. We have been working on the South Glendale Community Plan, and we had two meetings on July 12th and July 19th with the City Council. They were actually study sessions to help the Council understand where we are. This was at their request. They wanted to have input when we were ready to proceed with the Environmental Impact Report, so that's what we had a meeting on. We were discussing some of the facts related to South Glendale in terms of what the residential capacity is in the area, what our existing zoning is, how many units we have, some of the issues that the Council might want to consider for dealing with our residential areas, we brought them forward. We were going to have the third meeting next, next Tuesday at 10:00 AM, however, that's been moved to the evening, so it'll be on the 26th of July at the 6:00 PM Council Meeting, and it'll be essentially a third study session where we're going to be looking at transportation impacts and some of our corridors. And so, everybody's invited to take a look at it, welcome to attend the meeting. I know some of our Commissioners have attended the meetings or have expressed interest. The other issue we have is that there will be a meeting also on August 16th, and that's another meeting with Council. We don't have a time or location yet, but that will essentially be a rapid meeting where we can hopefully get direction from Council on how to proceed with our Environmental Impact Report for the South Glendale Community Plan. And also during this time, once we have direction on proceeding with the alternatives for the Environmental Impact Report, we'll be doing community outreach. So, you'll see us for the next several months out at different community events, and we will inform you, so you're welcome to attend those two if you want to participate in those. We anticipate that we'll have an Environmental Impact Report out already for public review sometime late fall, so just to give you an update.
So, that would be a program environmental impact report as opposed to just, I mean, it's going to be for the entire...
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's for the South Glendale Community Plan.
It'll be a full EIR?
Yes, it is a full EIR.
And so, for the benefit of the folks that may be watching and the rest of us that may not have attended or had not had an opportunity to attend the first two, those segments are available and they are recorded?
I do not know if they're going to, they were recorded, they weren't recorded in total. There is a synopsis essentially being put together of direction that we've received from Council. I do not know if that's available yet online, but I can tell you, all the materials that were provided to the Council, all of those are available online on the city's website.
And under Glendale, the South Glendale Community Plan?
Under South Glendale Community Plan, as well as you'll also see our outreach schedule, so as we know we're going to be at outreach events, we'll post those as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from the Commissioners?
In regards to...
Any. As to that, or...
Any.
I had a general comment. Just for the record, the time allotted to applicants includes the applicant's main representative and any and all experts that they bring to the table, so they can't stack one applicant, one speaker after the other after the other. Let's just be mindful of that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
It's the dizzying array of the lights, the green and the orange, that got me off, but you're absolutely correct.
You're correct.
You're absolutely correct.
Because it is going to cause an issue.
We forgot, yes, that's correct.
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Any other comments?
Move be adjourned?
Well, so moved.